So you're aware I had staff who was kind of filled in because these were Patty and her part of the house and there was nobody here, so Patty's having staff kind of sit around the table so they look like they're presenting.
The person, it means a lot, so you're very clear. Board members, we're going to get started. When we're done looking at board member Rebe's shoes, are you going to show us all now? They are kind of cool. Yeah. No. Well, I want to welcome you all here today. We've got guests and board members, you know, this is like day two and on the tail end of that, but we still have work to do. I want to welcome you to the study session. This is on suicide prevention. Who's going to take the point on this? Superintendent Dixon. Turn the time over to you.
Thank you Chair Huntsman. Okay. I just pretended to be you there for a minute. I did your duty.
Well, I just, oh, sorry. Thank you. I was making sure we had some Kleenexes around here, but I, okay, we're good.
We're good. Okay. Thank you Chair Huntsman and board members. I am, you know, this is one of those topics that's hard to talk about and yet at the same time so necessary, and I really appreciate those board members who came forward and said, "We need to have this conversation and engage in a study session." And I have the, I really consider it an honor and a privilege to sit on the Lieutenant Governor Suicide Prevention Task Force, and we have really important conversations. Sometimes they're challenging conversations, but I feel like we're making progress. And I so appreciate that the board has dedicated staff to working on this issue as well. And Kathy Davis is here in her role, and she has a lot of support and people who work on her with this, on this issue with her. So I will turn the timer to Board Member Warner, who is going to moderate a panel. We thought we would have a panel discussion today and start with some presentation and then ask a few questions that we've heard you all make inquiries about, and then we'll leave about 15 minutes at the end for Q and A. We'll excuse, Dr. Gray has to catch a plane at about 2:15, so if he sneaks out early, you'll know it's not that he's offended, he just needs to leave to catch a plane. So with that, Board Member Warner.
She's logging in, I believe.
I would like to thank so many of our staff that have worked on this and our board leadership and our superintendency. I wanted to share a couple of facts about suicide in Utah. Every year in Utah, an average of 4,000 individuals attempt suicide and 500 individuals die by suicide. A Utahn in this state, so in this state, a Utahn dies by suicide every 16 hours. So if you're wondering, yes, we had one last night. Utah has had the highest prevalence of suicidal thoughts among adults in the country, according to a recent study by the CDC. Utah's suicide rate is consistently higher than the national average. Suicide is the leading, the eighth leading cause of death for Utahns overall and second leading cause of death for teenagers or youth between the ages of 10 and 17. For many years, there was a huge difference between auto fatalities and suicide. That gap has closed significantly. Utah ranks fifth in the nation of suicides for youth 10 to 17 and 44 youths between the ages of 10 and 17 died by suicide last year. I thought I'd also throw in a couple of other things, that youth, the youth rates of suicide have tripled since 2007 in this state, and that hasn't been seen anywhere else in the country. So we certainly have a problem. This weekend Lieutenant Governor Cox is inviting us along with a number of other organizations and groups and people to participate in the Utahn Weekend of Prayer for Suicide Prevention. So I wanted to thank Lieutenant Governor Cox for this and those that have organized it. They had a press release this morning, and if you want some information, I'd be glad to provide it for you, but we've got a serious problem. I was just sharing with Dr. Gray that it used to be, we did things, we saw suicide here and there. As a victim advocate, my office, we respond, and I just want you to know, we are inundated, and it is something that I can't even begin to describe how often it is happening. So I would like to thank our panelists. I would really, really like to thank Molly for coming.
Thank you Molly.
I think it's really important that we hear from you, because a lot of times, we can talk as experts or people in the field, but really truly, it's the victims and their families that really tend to touch our lives and our hearts for change. So thank you. I'd like each of you to take a few minutes and introduce yourselves and share a little bit about your perspective and any information you think.
There's a button there to push.
You take about five minutes, and then we'll go from there for our questions. We'll start with you, Dr. Gray.
Hi. Is that working? Can you guys hear me?
What is this code?
We'll have to put Laura's in there. Can we use the?
Chair.
Okay, that one's on.
There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Okay. Try it now.
How about now? Oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So I'm Dr. Doug Gray, and I work at the University of Utah. I'm a professor of psychiatry, and my paying job is I train doctors for a living, and we have a great general psychiatry program, which I've run the last couple of years, and we train child psychiatrists, and we have a triple board program. I don't know if you've heard of that, but train doctors to be pediatricians and child psychiatrists and adult psychiatrists, and have addiction psychiatry and addiction medicine and some other programs, and I'm responsible for those. My hobby is suicide prevention. I volunteer my time for the last 20 years, and I'm happy to say, the first 15 years, it was, you know, even though it was slogging through the mud, the last five years, we've developed an amazing team, including Kim and Kathy and others, all of us working together. So I have a lot of hope for the future because of the team that we're pulling together. Suicide is not just a Utah problem, it's a problem across the United States. Suicide rates are up among adults. Suicide rates are up among kids, and it's a problem in Utah with the same kind of things. Now, just to put it in perspective, people say, "Well, what's wrong with Utah? Why are our rates higher than the national average? They're so much higher." But actually, we're the same as our neighbors. So the Rocky Mountain states have high rates, 20 to 30 percent higher. I spent years trying to figure out what that was about, and I gave a talk one time, and Perry Renshaw was in the back of the room, and it's a long story, I can tell some other time, but we sorted out that there might be problems with brain metabolism at higher altitudes that might cause treatment-resistant depression. Perry and I published the first study on the altitude hypothesis, but now there's like 10 studies, including animal studies. You can put animals at higher altitude, and there were actually depression tests for rats. I know that sounds funny. And rats get more depressed at high altitude. So when you can do it in an animal model, you know that it's biological, it's not something we're imagining. So the Rocky Mountain states always have the highest rates, so we have that too. Now, a lot of the studies I've done, we've gone into homes after a suicide, talked to families, and when we say, you know, "Why do you think Johnny suicided? Why do you think Sally suicided?", they usually think, they usually talk about that final straw, the final thing. They wrecked their car. Romantic breakup, that's a real common one, or they had to go to court and they were worried about it. Things they could have gotten through pretty easily, but they were overwhelmed by that, probably because they were struggling with depression or something else. But as we sit down and talk to the parents, and we go through our questionnaires, they realize, "Oh, yeah, Johnny did have depression. Oh, yeah, he threw his medicine out. Oh, yeah, he refused to go to therapy," or, you know, "Oh, yeah, he was struggling with his grades," and on and on. So by the time we finish talking to the family, they'll say, "You know, yeah, it's like a puzzle with nine or 10 pieces, and the romantic breakup was the final piece, but it wasn't why they suicided." And I always tell, I always say to people, "If romantic breakup was the cause of suicide, none of us would be here, right? We've all had a romantic breakup at some point." So what does cause adolescents to suicide? The main culprit is mental illness and/or substance abuse, and the combination is really deadly. Over 90 percent of adolescents that commit suicide have a diagnosis of mental illness or substance abuse. The most common diagnosis is depression, because depression is more common. But if you want to go the other direction, which diagnoses are the most dangerous? Bipolar and schizophrenia. Those are the two diagnoses that carry the most risk. Obviously genetics is important, and when I started in the psychiatry department 28 years ago, Paul Winder, you ever heard of Paul? He came up with something called ADHD. He was the first one to talk about it. He was our most famous professor in psychiatry, but he also went to Denmark and did adoption studies, and he was able to look at people that were adopted at birth, grew up, and completed suicide, like they were 63. And he went back to see where the risk was, and this is a bit shocking, but the family that raised these individuals had zero increased risk of suicide in their family. But the family they never met, the biological family, had sixfold increase in suicide rate. So there is a very big biological component. There is not a single gene. There is not, it's a, there's a number of genes that increase risk, and I'm working with some geneticists now to look at the genetics of suicide. Firearms availability, that's a big one. And fortunately, in Utah, both the gun haters and people who run shooting clubs and NRA have come together as a group, and that doesn't happen in every state, I promise, and they've come up with, yes, we want, we don't want to have children have access to these firearms. It's bad, and we don't want, especially kids at risk for suicide. So we're working on that, including programs to give out trigger locks and other kinds of programs. Highest rates of suicide, typically Caucasians, but if you look at Native Americans, Native Americans have to be considered by tribe. Each tribe's like a separate nation. So their rates are all over the board. They have some of the lowest rates and some of the highest rates, so you almost have to look by tribe. Certainly some tribes have astronomical suicide rates. Males more than females, about 80 percent of the suicides are male. On the other hand, if you look at suicide attempts, that's primarily female. And the attempters and the completers, we always think of them as one group, but there really are different groups. And so the question is, should we work on prevention for that one person, that terrible tragedy of suicide, or for every suicide from a teenager, there's 200 attempters? Or should we give our resources to the 200 attempters who are alive that we can help? And the answer is, we've got to split our resources, do both. But one's a group of males, sometimes getting in trouble with the juvenile court system, they're not gang bangers, they're kids who are having trouble with getting caught for alcohol, truancy, things like that. And the other group are females, more amenable to treatment, and there's a much larger group of them. We need to help both. Yes?
Do we want to save the rest of that for our panel? Questions I have, you're answering some of my questions I have.
I think I'm probably, I'm just looking to see if anything else I want to say before.
You're answering before I ask.
Oh, I'm answering the questions. I'm sorry. Let me just see if there's anything else I want to say. I think that's fine for now, and I'll be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
I have questions for you. Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, I'm just going to enter in the code.
Okay.
Hi. So my name is Kim Myers. I'm the Suicide Prevention and Crisis Services Administrator with the State Division of Substance Abuse and Mental Help. And I was asked to come in and share some info on the state plan for suicide prevention here in Utah. And our goal with the state plan is ultimately, you know, zero suicides, there's no suicide that we're, level that we're comfortable with, but in a shorter term, a reduction of 20 percent by 2025. And that aligns with some national goals by groups like the National Action Alliance for Suicide Prevention and the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. So before I go into the specific goals and strategies, in the plan, you know, they're very important, but we also know process matters and how we carry out strategies that we have found to be useful matter as well. So we talk about in the plan, the importance of monitoring Utah data, including risk and protective factor surveys, which we do primarily through the SHARP survey or the Prevention Needs Assessment administered co between our offices, and that's a very important thing for us to keep an eye on, to see, you know, what are the factors that might be driving increased distress. We also look at death and attempt data, emergency department visits, hospitalization, and some other things to help us as we are ultimately looking at that death data as the ultimate outcome, but we need to look at other data as well. We also really encourage a community approach. I think that oftentimes, you know, we put the burden on something like a school to solve a problem that is a community problem, and that's, you know, we can't solve things by ourselves that are so complex and so community-based. And so we have a couple strategies that we have highlighted as important in terms of the broad community effort. So we use community coalitions throughout the state to bring stakeholders together to address the problem in sort of different areas in the community, and we use a strategic prevention framework, which is a data-driven process that encourages us to do comprehensive needs assessments, to look at what's going on, both in the state but at the local level as well, and to bring forth key leaders in the community to help plan, create buy-in, and implement strategies that are based in science, based in, you know, research, and then ongoing evaluation assessment, and continue to build capacity. So, you know, Doug gave a bit of a, you know, outline into the problem of suicide in Utah. One of the things that I will sort of add on to that is, it's important for us to understand, you know, maybe we look at the first data point there in 1999, the difference between Utah and the US. I think things like altitude can help us explain maybe why we have a consistently higher rate of suicide in the US, but we've also had some very troubling increases over the past decade, and those need to be explained in another way. And so we need to be think about both, what are the things that give us an increased rate in general that are sort of, you know, in our region, and how do we address those? But also, are there other things that are driving this increase that we've seen over the past 10 years? So this is data around Utah schools, many of you familiar with, but this talks about how many students, you know, in a typical classroom will experience thoughts of suicide and will experience or make a suicide plan or have an actual suicide attempt. And this data, you know, we've been tracking since 2011, and it's getting worse as well. And so we have more kids in more distress and who are not doing well mentally, and we have a lot of work to do to understand what's going on and what's driving that and how we combat that and how we help people, people in their mental health to not develop mental health problems, but also respond to those problems when they occur. You know, it's really important when we look at this, when we're looking at specific strategies to break it down by, you know, specific populations, specific geographical regions. For example, we know that when we look at this kind of data nationally, that our LGBTQ youth have much higher rates of thinking about or attempting suicide, and so we have to understand those things, and they have to help us guide our strategies. I also want to share just context on the need to approach and have strategies at all levels. This is one of the reasons that we really promote coalition models, because we can't all address every single level. So how do we do this at the societal level, the community level, within our interpersonal relationships, and within ourselves and other individuals in our community to promote protection and reduce risk at a population level to help bring down our overall rates? So these are some of the core risk and protective factors that we're focused on. We want to make sure that we have communities that people feel connected to, whether that be a school, a church, a neighborhood, hopefully all of the above, right? That we just find places where we feel connected. Human connection is as important to our health as food and water. You know, recent research came out and said that loneliness is now an earlier predictor of early death than obesity. So this need to feel connected, truly connected to people, is among the most important things we can focus on. We also have to have effective behavioral health care, contacts with supportive caregivers, and we have to have skills at the individual level. Risk factors, you know, Dr. Gray talked about all of these, and these are the things that we want to reduce in our communities.
I'm going to, because your next couple slides are part of the questions.
Okay. We have to do a lot, and then do, this is the actual plan, if you want to see the goals that are in the plan, or more, sorry.
Can we have questions now? Is it, you're stupid?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is the plan. We have nine overarching goals, and we can talk about all of those, but there's room in a school community to address most of these, and we have always been really grateful for the partnership with the schools, with the state school board, and we'll continue to work on this together.
Yes, keep that slide up.
Okay.
Sorry. So yesterday, I walked away from my house that has been my home for the last 12 years, which was the place I did my most sacred work of mothering, and that was something I would not have done had my daughter not committed suicide. Those were the happiest times of my life, and my daughter was a very joyful, happy, non-depressed child. She was loved by her teachers, loved by staff. Everybody saw her as a joy. She was student of the month, the month that she killed herself, for her tolerance, because she was the kid that all the teachers knew they could put with the kid that was ostracized, and Lily would be kind. But Lily's depression started when she realized she was a lesbian, and she told me, and it took her a few attempts to tell me, but when she did, I of course said, "Okay, what do you need? I love you. That was not an issue." And she was surrounded by adults that loved her and supported her. There was no adult in her life that rejected her because of this. And as soon as she entered middle school, which I would later learn, was a fairly toxic environment, especially for any child who is marginalized, but definitely any child who was gay, and I'm using gay as a generalized term. She painted, I'm just going to show you this, I don't know if some of you may have seen it. This was recreated as a mural at the Youth Garden Project. This was an assignment for Lily was to do, her comment of how she saw herself in the world and how she saw the world. And the rainbow horse is in a gay kid, and everything around, all of this grayness, was the hopelessness that truly, when you speak about the last trigger that puts a kid over the edge, yeah, she was told to kill herself multiple times the day before by a group of boys, and it wasn't the first time she had been told that. As soon as she entered middle school and showed me that she had been cutting, I got her into a different therapist that specialized in working with young girls who are self-harming. She loved her therapist, trusted her. My sister's a social worker. We all gave her support, and we all thought she was doing better, right? And then that was this tipping point, right? And then there was also first love, first heartache, all of those components. So it is a very complicated puzzle. However, I feel, you know, we use analogies like building foundations for kids, right? That we have this foundation we're building for them. But if, I like the analogy better of a buoy. My therapist helped me understand this one. So if a buoy isn't there, you're going to drown as soon as you can't swim. You can keep rebuilding foundations. And gay children in this state are drowning, and they're drowning. I was a teacher at the time, I taught for three years. I saw what was going on. I saw how children treated one another, definitely saw how they treated the gay kids. It was not an environment that was safe for them, it was not an environment where they felt valued or loved. Lily often complained about her transgender friend being bullied in front of teachers, which sends the message that the teachers agree, that it's okay, that it's wrong. It's not a message of hope or love or value. So as much as we try to give her this hope and love and value as a family, the buoy that is the social environment of schools is more important once they hit fifth grade and that differentiation process begins, and we all know the insanity of middle school age when their brains are flooded with hormones and cortisol levels rise, that these, that is why, I agree that it is a multi-layered issue, and like, I've been trying to promote ways that people can go from the individual level, from their home, into their community to try and create a more accepting, loving world. But we need, our kids need to see this love in our schools. They need to see it in action. They need to know that they are going to be protected, that just because they're transgender, that doesn't mean they're going to be ignored when they go to the office and say, "Hey, this guy was, this kid was just bullying me." Or where Lily would have felt safe to say, "Hey, I was just told to kill myself," over and over. And she did not. And I didn't pry in her journals, I didn't read her journals until after she died. And none of us could understand how she saw herself and how she wrote about herself as a monster and as being unlovable or as being horrible, because she was so, every adult around her loved her and thought she was fantastic. She was an incredible human being. But it was because, and I wouldn't find this out for a few months, it was because of this environment at school. This is what she was being told. So I think a lot of these things are critical, yes, on the individual level, there are children who are gay who are not accepted at home. I feel like the school educates not only the children, but it also educates our community as a whole, and if our school does more to generate a community and an environment of love for these children, that will also help the families that are rejecting them, the children who killed themselves because their family said, "I don't accept you. I don't love you." Or, "It's a love with conditions." And I feel that love is too big for that. Love is not limited, love is not judgmental. And so if we truly love children, we have to love all of them, regardless of any personal bias or belief, they are all valuable. And Lily, there's, you know, people will tell me, "I'm sorry for your loss." This is not loss. This is total and utter annihilation. And Lily didn't have guns. They did find in her room some aspirin, but, and I read through the toxicology report after, from the coroner's report when they did the, I can't think of the word, sorry, part of my brain was broken when I found her. Certain words, I can't get to come. Part of this problem is also that they're facing such a different world than any of us ever faced when we were children. They can't leave it. Social media and the toxic world that that is, is a huge problem that we have to address. And I was asking about the frequency with which teachers are trained in suicide prevention. I truly believe that that needs to be increased because of these rates going up, not just in Utah, but everywhere, because the environment they're facing is different, and we have to learn new strategies as teachers. I can't teach anymore because I, my children, I treated my students, they were like my children, and I personally, right now, can't mother other people's children because I can't, mine was ripped away and the brakes were put on. So they, sorry. So I sent you all these necessary components. These came from hours and hours over the last year and a half of dialogue with students, with other teachers, with administrators, with mental health workers, with people who have experienced bullying in the schools, and I hope that you will all look at those, because every one of these have to happen, primarily, thank you. If you don't ask kids how they feel, we don't know. We can all say, "Oh, I have, you know, I have an assumption, I don't know how many of you have children," or "How many of you are teachers?" have children or how many of you are teachers, but we can't assume how they feel. And the SHARP survey needs to include data like, what is your gender identity and what is your sexual orientation? Because I do believe that the part of this significant rise has to do with the culture that is not embracing these children who are gay with love. Policies, Lily had no faith, and the overwhelming message from students, am I going too long?
Oh, no, we were just going to have you state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Molly McClash. Policies, kids have no faith in a system if they see administrators discriminate on who they're going to help. And Lily clearly saw that. I asked her why she didn't go talk to the principal and talk about what she was witnessing, and she said, oh, I will not get on her bad side. That said a lot. And our school district, I have to praise because they have really done a lot. They've changed the policies, they've included the matrix that is much clearer and doesn't allow for as much variance for administrators to give consequences. One of the most important pieces is the mental health component. There needs to be therapists in every single school, and these are not guidance counselors. Guidance counselors are trained very differently than practicing mental health therapists because bullying is violence, and violence is a mental health issue, and it's not just for the victim. Lily was not the only person who was, where I feel the school failed her. I feel that the way that they responded also failed the boys because those boys never got the kind of help they need, even if they were just going along with saying something that someone, just chiming in and going along with what someone says, saying, oh, yeah, yeah, you should kill yourself tonight, do it, do it. The fact that that happened, those boys need some help to be okay, because the ultimate outcome is, it's very likely they will end up committing suicide, because that would eat you alive. I cannot imagine participating in that and living through it, especially at that developmental age, that fifth to ninth grade. I mean, I'm not saying that kids in their, you know, older years are not also at risk, but it's such a critical time. So therapist trainings, we did get mandatory LGBTQIA awareness training. It created a lot of tensions. There were some teachers who were adamantly opposed to participating, and in my mind, those are the people that needed to participate the most because they need to understand what these kids are facing.
Wait, wait, we're going to hold you there because we've got a question about ideas.
Okay.
So we're going to move on to Kathy, and then we're going to come back. Y'all are jumping my gun here and trying to get my questions answered.
Thank you Chair Huntsman. Thank you State Superintendent Dixon. Thank you board members, and thank every panel member that I get this amazing opportunity to discuss something that is really important. I'm going to take you back 50 years. Oh, and my name is Kathy Davis. It's right here, written here, my name is Kathy Davis. I am the Suicide Prevention Education Specialist for USBE. I'll begin my remarks by telling you about what was going on in 1969. I was four years old. The Vietnam War was raging on, President Nixon was the president, and on May 1st, 1969, Fred Rogers addressed the U.S. Senate Subcommittee on Communication to argue that $20 million in funding was needed to continue his program and other programs. He used really simple sentences in his remarks, and this is what he said, word for word, this is what I give. I give an expression of care every day to each child to help him or her realize that he or she is unique. I end the program by saying, you've made this day a special day just by being you. There's no person in the whole world like you, and I like you just the way you are. And I feel that if we in public television can only make it clear that feelings are mentionable and manageable, we will have done a great service for mental health. I think it's much more dramatic that two men could be working out their feelings of anger much more dramatic than showing something of gunfire. Rather than assuming that distress, and we've talked a lot about distress here, emerges from some pathological internal process, a skills-based approach, one that 50 years ago Fred Rogers understood that the kids needed to know that their feelings were mentionable and manageable. I sense a tremendous waste of loss in this room and in communities across the state of Utah. I know that some people in this room have lost a child, many have lost a friend, a colleague, a peer, someone they knew, someone they cared about. Today, we're focusing on youth suicide. Even if you didn't know any of the young people who died, you lost something too, and you are experiencing grief, loss, and maybe even a bit of fear for your community. I am so very sorry for your loss. I made this slide four years ago to put in one slide all the dynamics that I saw happening because I was trying to figure out the why. I still don't know the why. Suicide is complex. The cause of suicide is often presented as being a single event, such as a bad grade, an argument with a parent, when there are many factors that interplay for a student to potentially engage in suicidal behavior. These are the risk and protective factors that were presented, and you can see that increased suicide risk increases as you have the capacity for suicide, you increase the warning signs, you have more risk factors, and you have access to means. The means, and I want to emphasize this to you, refers to the methods by which students are killing themselves, guns, pills, et cetera. Youth suicide is a serious public health issue. Board Member Warner explained a little bit about the CDC study and talked a little bit about what the lay of the land is here in the landscape for youth suicide in Utah. I'm just going to highlight a few of the statistics. From 2011 to 2015, Utah saw a 141% increase in suicides among youth ages 10 to 17 compared to an increase of 23.5% nationally. And when she talks about that incredible increase, she's correct. Suicide ideation and attempts among Utah youth have also increased. I'm going to talk to you about some of the latest data that we have from 2017, and can I just call you Molly?
Yes.
All right, Molly mentioned the importance of data, the importance of understanding what's going on in our students' world. I started out 50 years ago, but fast forward to 2018, 2019, this school year, what our students are facing is far different from what I faced as I was going through school. So according to the Utah Youth Risk Behavior Survey, in 2017, within the past 12 months, 24.9% of Utah students that were surveyed reported they felt sad or hopeless. That's one out of four of our students. 16% reported they seriously considered attempting suicide, and 7.1% reported attempting suicide at least once. A community and statewide emphasis on prevention is needed. Schools play a very critical role in suicide prevention, not only for current students, but also for our future students. And we all need more knowledge about the warning signs of suicide, how to facilitate opportunities to strengthen mental well-being.
Okay, I'm going to stop you there because Dr. Gray has to leave soon, and we're going to put him on the spot. So we would like to know, Dr. Gray, what priorities might the board consider to change the trajectory of the suicide numbers that we're hearing? And the information that you've found, what can we do to consider changing?
Sure, let me just start with more, something more philosophical, and that is, it doesn't matter if it's school districts or groups of physicians in my hospital. When we come down and say, everybody has to do this, or everybody has to do that, usually there's a lot of resistance. What people won't resist is if I go to the emergency room docs and say, suicide's a problem, let's look at three or four things we might be able to do, and let's have you guys help me choose one of those, look at, you know, look at the studies and look at the stuff. And so I think we all need to, I think we need to have a menu of possibilities, and we need to allow people to make steps towards suicide prevention in ways that, you know, will have an impact, but they also, people need to have a choice about how they're going to do that. So I'll start with, you know, I've, the only two people that have been at this 20 years are Greg Hodnall and I, and he runs the Hope for Utah program, which I believe in, and I have no financial interest in it at all, but I have helped him when he needed help with that program. I think that's a great program because I really believe in sort of the Hope Squad and having them supported by school, especially trained school administrators, and having them supported by local mental health center. But, you know, there's other good programs. Sources of Strength is a really good program. Signs of Suicide is a really good program. So I would never tell anyone, you've got to do this program, I would say, look at a program. Why choose a Utah program? Well, normally, when you create a program, it takes 20, 25 years to get it out there, and you've usually, whoever's done that, whatever psychologist, whoever's done it, has spent thousands of hours on it without getting paid, and then they usually trademark it, and then when it goes outside of their state, it's $5,000 to school or $8,000 to school. And so I think these are all good programs, but I think Hope for Utah is giving away their program to Utah. And so, and we're doing a lot of research on the program now, I just got a grant for them recently. We need to, they have some evidence base, it's going to go up shortly. So that's one program I like. I really like Safe UT, the app. I like the idea of having all of our teenagers in the state, if they're distressed and they feel isolated and they want to talk to somebody, but maybe it's something they don't want to talk to their parents about, being able to text and get a licensed clinical social worker who can help them through a difficult moment, maybe prevent them from injuring themselves or killing themselves. I really like education. When Mary Kay Huntsman was the First Lady, she and I worked for a long time on a program called Power in You, where we'd take 18 to 21-year-olds who had suffered from anorexia or had suffered from severe depression, but they were recovered and doing well, and they came to schools and talked about their illnesses. Her husband was made the ambassador to China, and we had to close up the program, but it was a, it was really going gangbusters at the time. Anything we can do to reduce firearm access for children and teens would be huge help. For schools, you've got the problem of copycat suicides. We call those, we call that contagion in the suicideology world, but to control contagion is very difficult because I'll get us, years ago, I remember getting a call from a rural school, and they said, you know, call him Johnny Johnny, was our best basketball player, we want to retire his jersey in front of the whole school. And I'm like, you know, I'm sure Johnny was a great kid, the way you describe him, but if you put him on a pedestal like that, if you have an assembly, you might have two or three more suicides. So it's a very difficult problem, and they said, what should we say? I said, why don't you say to the students, Johnny was a good kid, he made a mistake, teenagers make mistakes, we could have helped him. So it's a fine line between acknowledging that the kid was, and when they call him it, very nice kid, but at the same time, not putting them on a pedestal so that you have more suicides, very difficult problem. So prevention is, I think we talked a lot about connectivity, you did a nice job of talking about that, and the problem we have when our kids hit the teenage years is they're focused on their peers. They're focused on their peers. So even if we're supporting them at home, and they feel loved at home, they, you know, they're trying to fit in with their peers, and there's a lot of pressure there. So when I've done some of my suicide studies, we interviewed families, and we've asked to interview a best friend, and about half of the kids, we couldn't identify a close friend. They had friends previously, but they'd become isolated with their illness or whatever else was affecting them. I guess I would like to, I wish I knew more about what we could do with social media because social media can be, can provide support or it can be very dangerous. I'm working with some young medical students that have expertise in developing apps, and they're just looking at me saying, yeah, the internet can be terrible and social media can be terrible, but we can do good things with social media. They give me some hope, these young medical students who are computer savvy, that we can fight back the other direction with social media, I'm kind of excited about that. And I just thought of this this week, and you guys can tell me if it's a bad idea, a good idea, but I would like to have a Good Samaritan law. So if any of you guys are driving home today and you see a car accident, somebody's bleeding, and you step in and you do your best, but you make a mistake, but you're really trying to help somebody, you're protected by Good Samaritan law, that's for physical medical problems. But we don't have protection, people are nervous, teachers are nervous about stepping in when somebody's suicidal, you know, what kind of liability am I putting myself under? Or forget about me, what kind of liability am I creating for my school or my principal, my superintendent? So just this week, I was just sitting there, and I talked to Steve Illison, who's our champion in the legislature, and he's thinking about it too. It'd be great to have a Good Samaritan law to protect anyone who's trying to help someone who's suicidal, so you're not, you're comfortable asking if they're suicidal, and if they are suicidal, you're doing the best you can to get ahold of their parents and bring them in, and if you're doing everything you can, that you're protected. Now, this wouldn't protect, you know, me working in my office because that's my profession, I'm trained to do that, and it shouldn't, but this is for, but it might protect me if I'm out at a ballgame and I need to help somebody, or something happens where, because I'm only really covered for working in my clinic and in the hospital. So I just think, that's a new idea I have, but those are a few ideas, and I'm glad to talk about any of those things.
Okay, before we go any further, he's got to leave in a few minutes. Does anybody have any questions specifically for Dr. Gray?
Board Member Lady?
Yes, I love that Good Samaritan concept. As we were talking about it, I was thinking that as a teacher in a school, it, we struggle with interacting with our kids too closely. And I'm not trying to sound callous or mean, or, but, you know, sometimes if you interact with a kid too closely, you're considered grooming them.
Yeah.
And so how do we, how do we distinguish this, and how are we going to figure out what the line is, and how, like, I want to do that, like, you just want to hug these kids, but you find there are barriers. So how can we mitigate this, and how can we figure out how to create that safe space so that we have that? I mean, as you were talking, I was thinking that maybe we can create ambassadors in our schools, and they would be trained, you know, maybe have two, you know, we have like a, we have a ESL, not an ESL, a gifted and talented person on every grade level, we have a special, anyway, we have grade levels that, maybe we can create an ambassador for every two grade levels that has a little bit more latitude and has been trained, but that Good Samaritan sounds great, but it makes me nervous, I don't want to put teachers in harm's way.
So I tell you what, this reminds me of a church I go to, I'm Episcopalian, and the priest said, you know, we're going to stop hugging kids in church, nobody's going to touch the kids. And I pulled him aside and I said, no, no, we've got, whether we're touching them on the head or giving, you know, we're not going to have teenage girls hugged frondally by some, you know, we're going to have boundaries about what we do, but if a three-year-old is showing you their picture and they want a hug, you can give them a hug. And we came to, you know, and came to the decision, we have to have two people in each classroom, that was our solution, but we're not going to stop patting kids on the head or patting them on the back or give them a hug on the side if they're a teenager. So you're always thinking about those things. Or I created a program for the juvenile courts, and I had to meet with the judges, and the judges are going, you know, we're going to have all this liability, because we were screening kids for suicidal ideation. And I just said, just think back to why you became a judge. You wanted to help people, and this is what this, and there is risk. So I'd rather take the risk, but I'd rather think about, have really open discussions about what the boundaries are and what we're comfortable with and not comfortable with. What I always tell the young psychiatrists I train is, if you're doing anything and you don't want to tell someone else about it, you're probably doing the wrong thing. If you are nervous that you're doing the wrong thing, talk to colleagues. And that's one of the, sort of the best advice I can give is, is we can have policies, but we also need to talk about what's acceptable, not acceptable. You know, like, I get invited to weddings and all these other things, and I don't go, I always send a card or something. And I remember I had a young patient who, he was development disabled, and he asked me to come when he got his Eagle Scout, and I just don't go to those things. But later on, they told me, like, almost no one went, and they were hoping I would come, and I was sort of devastated that I didn't go, and I should have And I should have talked to a colleague about it, and they would have said, "Yeah, this kid doesn't have friends. He's spent all these years doing this thing. He's not going to have many people there. You're probably okay going." But I would have talked to somebody, but I wouldn't have just gone. And I probably would have gone with my wife. But, so, the boundaries, you know, I think it'd be better if we just discussed them as we went and had some policy about what's okay and not okay. But we can't stop hugging kids. We can't be afraid to ask people, and they look sad if they're sad, and if they're sad, we can't be afraid to ask them if they're suicidal. And if that good Samaritan law will be helpful, I'll push for that very hard, so.
Okay, that's a really good idea. Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask about suicides?
Well, that's what I want to change.
Yeah, you can.
All right. I've got to run. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for joining us, Dr. Gray.
All right.
We have...
Does somebody else have any questions?
I get the question.
Is it a quick one?
Okay.
Okay. So you mentioned two of the risk factors, which would be mental health issues and substance abuse.
Yes.
And I've had a mother come to me once after her son killed himself, shot himself in front of her, and said, "Sober, John wouldn't have done this." And I'm just wondering if we have statistics on substance abuse and those who completed suicide? And is there a priority we can do to make, maybe address those issues of, how do we help kids deal with pain without numbing, you know, feelings and things like that? But do we have any statistics on that?
Well, I say the deadly, we know that people that die by suicide often have drugs or alcohol, or maybe have had those problems and were sober when they died sometimes. I think that that is the deadly combination because it disinhibits people. And I think, you know, it's different when you're 18 and you're out of the home or whatever, but when you're a child in the home, parents can limit access and can force kids into treatment if they need it. Insurance coverage is another problem, so it's something else for you to look at. But, yeah, I think, what was, what did, the stats we have is about 60% of all Utahns have some kind of substance onboard when they're...
So the data would say about 60% of all Utahns have some mental health or substance use problem at the time of their death. It's closer to a third have positive toxicology results. So a third have it onboard at the time of death.
And that's for all ages.
That's all ages. It's actually a little bit lower for youth.
It's lower for youth, yeah. But again, you could be using and be sober on the day, but typically, it disinhibits somebody who's been thinking about suicide. And I think mental health and substance abuse resources, Medicaid expansion would be big. We'd be able to serve a lot more people. I think that's one of the biggest things we can do to bring suicide rates down. And I don't mean that in a political, non-political, just in terms of providing healthcare to people that aren't getting it, so, thanks so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Travel well.
Kim, what practices are in place that are making a difference with suicide prevention and interventions? What was your slide?
That's my slide?
Wasn't that your slide? Okay.
Oh, do you want me to go back to that?
Yeah, the other slide. She was just starting to talk about some of that.
So strategies that have been shown to be effective. Again, there's, the most, if you look across initiatives that have been successful in reducing suicide, it's, with one exception, it's always about a comprehensive approach. So it's always about groups. So, for example, if you look at data on Garrett Lee Smith Suicide Prevention Program, which is a federal congressional act that provides funding to communities, so when they show that communities have Garrett Lee Smith funds and are doing the strategies associated with that, they show a reduction in those counties. But they're about doing comprehensive things. So they're about changing the culture around the problem of suicide. We're talking about it. We're training people. We're getting people into care. We're changing the culture around mental health. The same is true for the Air Force, which had a huge reduction in suicide deaths with a very comprehensive strategy. And the same is true in sort of all of the others. The one thing that you can do on your own as a standalone strategy is this idea of means restriction, so this idea of reducing access to lethal means. So an example is, in Great Britain, they started selling basically the active ingredient Tylenol, which can cause a lot of liver damage. They started selling those in packs of 16 and 32, in blister packs, and saw a reduction in overdose rates and in unintentional and intentional poisonings. They saw reductions in the UK in gas when they switched the gas that was used in homes and stoves to human non-toxic gas. So these single-issue things you could do are really reduce access to lethal means. And what that would mean in Utah is somehow reducing access to primarily firearms. But, so, since I don't think we're going to do that, I think we have to do a lot of everything. And so what's been effective, I think access to care is really important. So I think the school-based mental health, the school-based early intervention and mental health initiative that we've done in partnership of our office and the State Board of Education has been ineffective in getting people into care younger. We know that mental health issues have sometimes a degenerative process, so the longer they're untreated, the worse they get and the harder they become to treat. And so when we can intervene early in, at school-aged youth, we know that that can be a very powerful thing. And we do have important partnerships with the firearm community to promote a culture of safe storage and making sure people who are going through either a crisis or a kid in general don't have access during that time of crisis, much like we would say somebody shouldn't have their keys when they're drinking, right? Let's, somebody if their thinking is impaired, not allow them access to firearms. So I think that's been an effective strategy. In the healthcare realm, we've undergone a significant process called the Zero Suicide Initiative, and that's improving healthcare to be more responsive to people at suicide risk. And that's been shown in healthcare systems to reduce population suicide rates. And so Intermountain, our public behavioral healthcare system, and the University of Utah healthcare system have all made commitments to zero suicide. I think, you know, I think things like the new, there was legislation around underage drinking prevention last year, that they, the State Board chose a program called Botman's Life Skills to fulfill that. I think that has a lot of opportunity to have crossover impact for suicide prevention, for mental health promotion, as well as underage drinking prevention. So I think supporting prevention strategies as they overlap is an important tool in things like increasing coping problem-solving skills. I think we've done a lot of good things. I think training in the community is good. That includes teachers. That includes parents. That includes people across the thing. I think we probably aren't doing enough of any of it to see the impact that we all want to see, which is that significant change in reduction. So I think everything needs to be sort of ramped up, and we need to probably have this focus on, what do we do about this social media piece and the technology piece that we haven't really addressed? And there are probably some sub-populations that we also need to focus on that we haven't, so.
Thank you. Molly, with regards to everything that we've talked about today, what is the role of the parent in the school system and education in supporting our youth with a positive mental wellbeing and in suicide prevention?
That's a hard one. I mean, I think, you know, I tried to do everything right. I got my daughter into therapy, found somebody she liked, she connected with, she felt safe to talk to, surrounded her with adults that loved and accepted her. And I, so the role of the parent is critical. I mean, they need, kids need to know they're loved at home. But I agree that, I feel like what's going on in our schools at that age becomes much more important. It's the buoy that holds them up or doesn't. And so that peer pressure thing, and so touching on something that you had mentioned about social media, Lily hung herself. So this was not, I made sure there was no guns accessible. I locked up every pill that I could find, any cough syrup. I, but we had horses. That was the one thing that she loved, right? It was one thing we did together. And she hung herself, and she learned how to do it online. I didn't realize, and I couldn't look for months. My sister did. She asked me, "Was there a rope going off to the side?" And I was like, "Yeah, actually, there was." And she said, "You can find that online. You can find exactly how to hang yourself, how to tie a noose, and how to tie a rope off to the side so that, basically, you will have, you struggle for about 20 seconds and then you pass out." So it makes it easier. And between my sister and her therapist and I, in discussion, we think that she was leading towards sharing her ther, with her therapist, that she had been looking at the time. Children are live-streaming their suicides. So they're posting on YouTube themselves hanging themselves in trees. And hanging is one of the more popular ways of live-streaming, so I think that we'll see an increase in hangings. It's a less messy death, right? So I feel like, when you say remove things, like, you can, you can have all those components in place, but I couldn't, if I could go back and change one thing as a parent, I would have pulled my daughter out of that school.
Okay.
That would have been the number-one change I would have made. I would have, I wish I would have recognized how toxic that environment and how hopeless she felt in that environment, based on what she was seeing and what she was experiencing. And that was the discrimination. There is a group called, they're working on digital citizenship. They had a conference last year. I can't remember who they were. They sent me an email. It was awesome. And I think it's, the whole idea is to, basically, try and promote in schools to address this new element they're facing of the toxic digital world and to elevate more of a sense of mindfulness, respect, and citizenship that goes with that, so, in that responsibility.
Good idea.
Oh, and I have a quick question. Is Safe UT working? Because when I was a teacher, it was not. It was promoted as a great, okay, good.
Yeah, I think it's working. Thank you. Kathy, to wrap up this question, what are some, what are two or three priorities that the board should have as we move forward to help alleviate these issues?
These are 12 priorities that my work group, headed by Lily and Sosie Jensen last year, came up with. And I want to just focus on the priorities that are in the middle that focus primarily on education, and then I'm going to show you something that just got passed through the Standards and Assessment Committee that I think is going to be very hopeful in getting our kids equipped to deal with. We do fire drills all the time. I'm going to have you fill in the blanks. Stop, drop, and?
Roll.
Roll, okay? What do we do when our brain's on fire? What do our kids do when their brain's on fire? I'll let you read that, but I'm going to show you what just got passed in the Standards and Assessment Committee. And this is how you brave today. How many of you have ever had a hard day? A meltdown? You lost your keys? Your alarm clock didn't go off? What other things? Like, I remember being late for school one day because I couldn't remember if you fall forward or, what is that again? Spring forward, fall back? You know what? I couldn't understand that. So Kristy Hutchinson, I've got to do a shout-out to my dear friend Kristy Hutchinson and the team that I am so privileged to work with because it's hard. Every day is really hard. Sometimes in the elementary, we made it really simple. These are your ABCs. How is my body feeling right now? What am I feeling? Let me name it. And why don't I just concentrate on breathing? And then, I need to connect to somebody. I need to figure out, what are my next steps? Then we move up, past the fifth grade to grade six through 12, we make it actually defined in terms of breathing. And then after you breathe and get your body back to baseline, you relax, then you ask, "What are the facts?" And validate, because we want kids to validate their emotions. We want to, as Mr. Rogers said 50 years ago, we want to validate what you're experiencing is real and then engage. Safe UT is one of those ways to engage. What are my next steps? What do, our kids have all the life skills that they need to navigate all the different things happening. Is the bullying happening just in our school classrooms or is it happening online? Or are, we really, we are noticing that these kids these days, they are not getting their driver's licenses. They're not dating. They're socially isolated. Our kids are transient. They're moving back and forth from school to homeschool, back to another school, and they're not connected. So this is something that just passed, and thank you so much for passing that.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a question also at this point, because you're over this at the State Board.
Yes.
I think that Kathleen brought up a really good point with Dr. Gray and this good Samaritan law.
Right.
We have a lot of teachers that have gone through issues growing, I mean, we all have struggles when we're growing up.
Right.
We have a lot of teachers that have had to overcome some difficult challenges in life. We have some teachers that may be, I worry because we're expecting our teachers to be social workers, but we have some teachers that have some good life experiences. And I wonder, as a State Board, your thoughts on how we can, we can protect children, but on the other hand, gosh, perhaps maybe the thing we're missing here is maybe having teachers able to talk to students about things.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then also providing protection for our teachers. When I do trainings, I say, "Do you have an employee assistance program in your district? If you are not doing well, how can you tie into counseling for yourself?" And I think it is, it really begs the question that we need to have all of our training in place. That was one of the priorities in the middle, training not only for our students, training for our teachers, training for our administrators, and getting everybody on board. If you wouldn't mind, Superintendent Dixon, I shared with you the email that I got this morning. I'm just going to read something from Dr. Scott Pollan that went to Jordan School District. Jordan School District made a significant investment. They decided to have all of their educators, everybody in the whole district, they paid over a million dollars to train each and every one of their employees in suicide prevention. And he said, "It is my opinion that the Jordan District has made extraordinary efforts in suicide prevention that need to be matched by all other Utah school districts. I also commend them for designating a staff member whose sole job is prevention and wellness." So I think those are two steps. I think we have a long ways to go. There's plenty of work to do, and thank you so much for, on my watch, I want zero suicide.
Thank you. I like the zero suicides, kind of like zero fatalities.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
So I know it was the intention of Representative Illeson when he passed House Bill 23 a couple years ago that made it explicitly legal for teachers to ask students if they're thinking about suicide, but that's not what I've heard today that is the interpretation.
Well, I think, can I, I guess I can answer it. I think there is, a student can be asked that. What I was thinking and what Kathleen was asking Dr. Gray about is, perhaps when somebody's having a really, really bad day or they're having a really bad struggle, a teacher can say, "You know what? I kind of went through something like that, too." We're not, we don't have our teachers sharing personal information, and perhaps we need to revisit that because in the past, we've had a very, very strict boundary between teachers and students.
I see, I see.
For safety reasons. But on the other hand, we're kind of, we're kind of having this issue here where we're the highest, you know, we've got this huge concern with mental health and with trauma and with suicide, and perhaps, I think that's what you were alluding to.
Well, FERPA doesn't really allow us, oh, sorry. FERPA doesn't really allow us to ask about their personal life too much. I mean, they're allowed to volunteer, but you're really not allowed to probe too far. And so that's very disconcerting, you know? I mean, I work with students in a CBTU unit, and this boy was taken by his mom, and, you know, he's talking to me, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh." You know, like, he's volunteering these things, but I can't respond, like, "Oh, what states did you go to? What kind of living situation did you have?" I mean, in my head, I'm thinking these things because he was probably homeless, probably living on the street, eating out of garbage cans, but I can't ask these questions, but shouldn't I know that? You know, I mean, so, I mean, this is kind of the dilemma that we have sometimes when we're dealing with our most vulnerable kids, you know, so.
Thanks for the clarification.
And I might have that law wrong in my head, but it would be nice to know further what I am allowed to ask. So I might be wrong in my assumptions.
Can I add something to that? Just my own personal experience, when I was teaching, I had numerous students who were homeless. Moab has a really big problem right now with housing, right? But I had students coming to me who were cutting, who were on the edge of suicide, who, some of them was because they were gay, some of them they'd been bullied, some of them was because they were being abused at home or they were in a home with meth or a home with alcohol. And I broke that law probably if that was the interpretation all the time because I felt like if they're coming to me, they need to be talking to someone. And I would always try and then get them connected to the school. and I would always try and then get them connected to the school-based therapist. But we had such a high turnover of school-based therapists, that then they would, they'd start to get a connection, and then they would drop it. They would not trust the next person. So that's one of those reasons I feel like a person who is engaged with mental health is so critical in the schools. Because I'm not a therapist. I do my best to listen and share. I would share some of my own personal experiences, and I think that's why they felt safe. And does help them at least open the door.
Just one sec.
I'll answer that question.
Okay, Superintendent, okay.
Yeah, I would just address that to Holly, she can answer.
Sorry, I'm not in our place.
I told you I didn't need the microphone.
And then we have another question, I think, from a board member. Not everything's coming up right, but I know somebody else wants to participate.
So educators can, when they perceive a risk, they can, so when you were saying that you were talking to students who were cutting, you can help support that student when there's that perceived risk. It's when you go and openly just ask questions. That's where that law comes into play. So Representative Elison's law did allow us to support students when they perceive a risk.
I think I follow up with it.
With, yes, and it must be followed up with the parent.
But what about those kids who are not going to raise their hand and come to you that you know they need someone to ask them if they're okay?
If you have reason to suspect that they need that risk, or that support, that's that perceived risk.
Okay.
And then you follow, always follow it up with the parents.
Okay. I think that training in that would be really great for teachers, because I was never taught that when I was, during the three years I was teaching.
Vice Chair Ellis, did you have something?
I just, I think this is an important discussion, and part of the reason why Board Member Gravitt asked for the ACES. I keep getting credit for it, but that was actually, Board Member Gravitt asked for that portion of it. But we also have to just be very careful that we recognize that we can't supplant a family's role in this type of situation. As great as our intentions are, we have to be cautious with that. And I, there's a situation in one of my districts where a teacher was openly talking about this topic. And I'm not going to bring up the same story that I talked about in our Standards and Assessment Committee, but one of the other schools, and they actually came up and testified to our board. And I sent out that testimony to a few of my psychologist friends. And they said, you know, it's, there's just this gray line where you're, if you're not trained on exactly how to approach a sensitive topic. And so when she was disclosing some of her personal experiences, the psychologist, after listening to the testimony, said, you know, they weren't in that class, but they wondered if that teacher was using that classroom as a group therapy session rather than, and then it caused, so basically, the teacher said that one in five kids came up and got a card for the suicide hotline. And after sending this out to a couple psychologists, they said they would wonder if, that part of the reason why it was such a high number of students looking for that hotline wasn't necessarily that they were having an internal struggle with suicide, but they didn't know how to process dealing with someone that was in a position of authority putting out so much personal information. So while I think it's important for people to be able to share situations and show that they're human and everybody deals with some of these things, there are still boundaries, and we need to make sure that, that there is, I mean, as you, someone stated, they aren't trained as a psychotherapist or as a psychologist. And so there is a difference.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really important, and I think that's a training issue, you know? And I think that, you know, if somebody, if I'm worried about a kid, and I would never go on some big story about, well, guess what happened to me? You know, it'd be like, I'm worried about you. I get that life can be hard. Here's what we can do to support you, and let's get your parents, you know? And so I think that that's a training issue, and hopefully can be seen as that, as opposed to, so we shouldn't do this issue. You know what I mean? I think that's, those are the two sides of the balance.
Okay, we have a couple other questions or comments, but I have one. And, Carol, I'll have you figure out who on the panel would best respond to this. And as I've listened to the community, and listened to a lot of people, and listened to specialists who are psychologists and psychiatrists, and then different levels of training in that, one concern moving forward, as we try to make one particular movement, maybe this is a concern that I see moving forward, is there's so many different opinions on how to and what to do first, second, third, you know, and the first response, and that, and the community, I'll call it, in my opinion, isn't all grounded on what's, what do you do first? What do you do second? And so, the, as we move forward on this, and we address policy and that, I think there's risk, and I'm not sure how, how we mitigate those risks of choosing something, because there's so many, I'm going to throw this back. How is that, how can we mitigate all those differences of opinion on that? Maybe you guys have, in your panels and groups have talked about this, but I think that's a big concern, especially as we roll this, if we roll something out to try to bring veterans to public education, the voices that I'm hearing that are very limited, I'm sure parents and educators are going to be hearing those same, same voices. And so as a policymaker, I see a significant challenge. So I'll let you address that concern, or ask someone on the panel.
I'm going to ask Kathy to address it, since she's our employee.
Oh, sure, absolutely. I'm just going to go ahead and, because I thought this question would probably come about, and I'm just going to, and I actually wrote this down. I said, families, schools, neighborhoods, and communities at large must become safeguards against suicidal thoughts for youth. So I think it's a community approach. It's not just schools, as Kim was saying. And I think this is something that Kim and Dr. Gray and the executive committee meeting is, is the, so we have a term in suicide prevention called postvention. Is, postvention is how you respond after a suicide, helps prevent further suicides, helps prevent contagion. And so, one thing that I have noticed, that if we include our youth in the decisions as to understanding what's really affecting them, meet our youth where they are, and survey them, talk to them, get an idea of what's going on, and also setting clear expectation and rules. And I think our kids want fences, they want structure, they want those rules established, boundaries. Giving them opportunities to participate in extracurricular activities, things that they enjoy, and providing a safe place, and providing a safe avenue to reach out for help. And that's where I want to just give the plug for Safe UT, because this is how our students communicate. They text, and we have data that supports all of the amazing things that this has provided for kids, a way to communicate their feelings. It's manned 24/7 by licensed clinical social workers that can respond and meet the kids where they are, and validate their experience for them. And Kim probably wants to add some things.
I would also add that we probably shouldn't be making policy based on opinions, but on what the research, the best available research tells us should be the one, two, three steps. And, you know, we can always help provide that, too. I mean, I think that there will always be a lot of opinions about how this should or shouldn't be. But good policy is based more in, I think, the research and what the science is telling us to do.
Thank you.
Board Member Gravitt, did you have something?
Yeah.
Okay.
This past summer, most of you know that I had three students, former students and two teachers, who died. At least three of those were suicides. We're not sure on one of them. And at least three of those were gay. Those individuals were gay. And Molly, I noticed that you mentioned in your notes for things that might be helpful is the awareness of students knowing a gay teacher who's out, and teachers feeling like they can come out. And I know Lily had a lot of bullying, but I wondered if you could comment, would that have made a difference for her to know a gay teacher? Did she know a gay teacher? And can you comment on that?
I know of a couple of teachers who were in her school who were gay and did not feel safe to come out, because they felt like their job was at risk. And yes, I think there had there been GSAs, which we now have in the schools, and a lot of the kids who I was, some of the kids she knew, some she didn't, who were walking that edge, are feeling a little bit better. They feel a sense of support, they feel a sense of community. But it's been difficult, because their GSA signs were ripped down, their safe zone signs.
Do you want to just define what a GSA?
Oh, a Gay Straight Alliance, sorry. It's a club that basically says, hey, for gay kids and straight kids, that's just saying, hey, this should be a safe place for everyone, right? So they see that visible support. So that has changed in our district. We now have those in the middle school and the high school. I think had she had those things, yes, I think that she would have felt different. I think had she known that one of, you know, she only had one of the two teachers that were in the school that were gay, if she had known that they were gay, I think she would have gone and spoken with them about what she was seeing, because she would have felt safer with them, that they would have not been judging her where she may have seen and witnessed that with other teachers. So yes, I think it would have made her, had a little bit, it would have opened windows for communication. So, definitely.
Okay. Any other board questions or comments at this point? Not seeing any. Okay, Carol.
Well, then to wrap things up, I just wanted to ask each of you to take one minute and share anything that you feel like hasn't been said today that you'd want to be mentioned. And we'll start with Molly.
Sorry. I personally am leaving this state because of the wall that I see of discrimination that is institutionalized in our schools towards gay children and gay adults. I will never, it's not something I will recover from, but I'm trying to find a way forward to survive. And for me to do that, I can't be constantly reminded, which I see it everywhere. And I think if you open your hearts, you will also see it, that, that love is kind of limited. That's the message in this state for anyone who's gay. And that God's love is not limited. So I hope that you will find a way to see that those kids are the most at risk. I think if you do begin getting data, I think you will start to see the proof and the evidence that these are the kids who feel the least safe in our schools and in our state. So I really appreciate you guys having me come and giving me the opportunity to share my experience and any insight that hopefully I've been able to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly, for sharing. Kathy?
I'm going to end with two things. There's a motto that Dr. Doug Gray told me when I first started, and it's three words, never worry alone. And then I'm going to end with a really favorite quote that has become my favorite quote. In my world, there are no bad kids, just impressionable conflicted young people, wrestling with emotions and impulses, trying to communicate their feelings and needs the only way they know how. So let's see if, when we want to create a trauma-sensitive school, we just added a definition of ACES, Adverse Childhood Experiences, to the board rule. That warms my heart. All of our staff, from the bus driver to the teachers, the administrators, they have to have a common understanding of trauma and its impact on students. When we are systemic in approach, student supports can be placed at each level, the universal level, to the tier two, to the tier three, to ensure interventions are holistic and sustained over time. Thank you for this opportunity to open up the discussion. Thank you for your courage.
We'll finish with Kim.
I get, I'm just trying to think what else. You know, I think that one of the things that I would leave with is that anytime we're putting into a new strategy, policy, program, whatever it might be, you know, we talk a lot about the idea of raising awareness. And I would just always encourage us to think about how we make awareness action-oriented, that it's not enough to be aware. I think we're all aware of the problem, and that we need policies that are supportive of action, whether it be, you know, state law, whether it be board policies, whether it be school policies, that allow us to truly support, engage, and intervene in these crises. And that we are really dedicated to a partnership model of doing this, and that we know on the mental health side, that it takes, you know, that it's, nothing can be, you know, kids, especially around kids, kids' problems can't be solved in a therapist's office, and that it takes a community approach. Same true for prevention. So we're dedicated to a community approach, to working with partners, both at the state level and at the local level, and we'll do anything we can to facilitate that process.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. I'd like to thank everybody. And as you mentioned, the ACES, I'd like to encourage anybody here that hasn't read the book The Deepest Well by Dr. Nadine Burke Harris to read it, because those that have difficult ACE scores are the ones that are most at risk. And we're seeing an increase of those scores. When I interview children, either on scene, or later at the Children's Justice Center when we talk to kids, or in court, I always ask them who their role model is, and who do they trust, and who do they look up to? And 90% of the time, it's a teacher. So I want to thank you all for being here. This is an important topic, and I hope that we can continue moving forward so that we can have zero fatalities with suicide. Thanks.
Thank you for kind of chairing the discussion. Thank you for being here today. Board members, do you have any closing comments? And I don't know, we're wrapping things up. Board Member Rebe?
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for giving voice to this problem. Thanks for clearing things up for me. Thanks for sharing your story. Just hurts my heart. So thank you so much for sharing.
Not seeing any other comments, but there's been value brought to our day today. So thank you for being here. I do have a quick question on the ABC and Brave. That's coming out of, I shot that to my girls. I now have three generations that are, including my wife, that is involved in public education. And I shot a picture to this, and I said, when your brain's on fire, no, not, no, I said, when you're on fire, you think stop. And then I asked them what they thought about this. And my wife is like, can I use this now? So I better slow, I better slow it down, but a lot of really positive from, so this will be, this will be good. Thank you for your work. And, Board members, thank you for being here on this portion of our board meeting. Look forward to our next one. Appreciate staff and the work that they've done. I know it's Friday night. I hope you guys have a, or Friday, it'll be Friday night when I get home. But I hope you have a great weekend, and thank you for your contribution to public education the last couple of days. Be safe. Thank you.